Call the meeting to order. You have the agenda in front of you. Is everything all right with the agenda? Is there any additions or deletions? Just the approval of the agenda? Okay, fine, thank you. Item number four is Presentations. 4.1. The Film Policy F-046-19. Mark is going to make that presentation.
Darlene's gone to find him. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you want to, we could zip down to 4.2 and then come back if you'd like to.
Yes, okay. 4.2. Draft Council Policy. Please say the word.
Procedural.
There.
It's a mouthful.
Policy C-028-19. Somebody else better say that word for me.
So if I can, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep, so the document actually isn't to a place where I'm recommending it as a complete document yet, but we are far enough along in the work that we wanted your feedback, for sure. It's a big document. And so we wanted to have a discussion about where we're at with it. Hear your questions and concerns, because we know we have a little more editing to do, so we wanted to incorporate the first round of review with the rest of our work. So what this is, this document represents a combination of your current existing in-force policy with the changes we discussed around how you'd like the meetings to run. And we've also incorporated some best practices for similar municipalities like East Hans. So I know it's a long document, but it speaks to a lot of different matters on how council conducts business.
Okay, at this time, is there any questions from Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to point out 2.14. I know it's not a complete document. It's pecuniary means, and there's no definition there.
That's right.
And at the bottom, there was a concern. There's some, I see some concerns just about layout and a few places where there needs to be some spaces. The inclusion of cellphone use or not use.
Could you, if you could, Counselor Durkey, could you just point out what section you are, so everybody can go with you?
Sure, I'm just trying to flip down to find that 2.14 I got. The other was, um... Sorry. It was a procedural, DDD, point about cellphones, but I can't remember exactly where that was. If anybody sees that, speaking of debate, I thought it was somewhere near the bottom, but I just, well, I'll just make the point where I just, I'm not sure that needs to be included, that we're adults and we have to make that decision ourself, whether we feel it's appropriate or not. And I don't know if that needs to be included in procedural. Sorry.
I'm looking for that section as well, Counselor Durkey.
Thank you.
But I'll speak to it while we hunt for it. So that is one of those best practices pieces that came in. A lot of it is around two pieces, if we understand what other administrators are saying. The request to add that by those respective councils came for two main reasons. One was, there was a feeling on the part of some of those councils that their cellphones could be distracting for, not just for the person using it, but for the other people participating in the meeting. And then the other piece was around people having a right to ensure that recordings are not taking place that shouldn't be taking place. So that's where it's coming from.
I understand. I just, in emergency cases with, for people, that I think certain situations, you know, I know people with health reasons or families with health concerns or parents or whatever that, you know, you want to have access to that, just for that reason. But I'm sorry, I can't... Darlene, do you know where that?
We're looking at section eight.
Oh, here it is. 11.7. It's 11.7 and 11.8. There were times where we were missing information also, where, you know, if we sent a message to Liz or whatever, we got the information that we needed picked up, so that's why I'm not sure that that should be included.
So in that particular case, I think 11.7 wouldn't be an issue. No member shall use cellular and wireless communication devices during meetings except to access meeting materials related to the matter under consideration, so...
No, to me, that, sorry. Right, yes, yes, yes. But in terms of not being able to use it, period, again, they're, say, Leland has had to leave because of contact from family members, so if we say, no, we can't use it at all, that means no one can contact us, and for emergency's sake, that's why we do not want to have that in there, because we feel like if someone has to go for emergency purposes, then we should be able to have access to our phones for that reason.
So if we are in meeting after 4:30, there won't be anybody at the switchboard. You are right.
Right.
Okay.
I would, I think 11.7, I think we should just be silent on it. I think everybody knows. I don't think it's been an issue, right? I mean, cellphones aren't going off and that type of thing. There are evening meetings, there are morning meetings. People may be members of fire departments.
Right.
Right? On and on and on and on, so I, pardon me? Yeah, and so I think that if it becomes an issue, I think that the chair may be, you know, has jurisdiction over the meetings and could have a word with an individual counselor if it, or staffer, for that matter, if it becomes...
That's right.
If it becomes problematic. So I think that should be discretionary and not as laid out as it is.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Counselor Cunningham had brought up a good, one of the points that I was going to bring up. My only fire pager that I have now is my cellphone. I don't carry the big bulky pager anymore, number one. And number two, I also have a lot of notes that I have from public meetings that are stored on my phone, and I can easily access them to there. I don't transfer them to the municipal computer. So that's the reason why. I can understand if there was something in there that says, "All cellphones must have their ringers and buzzers turned off and they're put to silent." I can see that.
Yeah.
But then again, if I use it as my pager, unless it lights up, how do I know?
Vibrating.
Yeah, at least on vibrate. I guess you could have something in there that states something along the lines that your ringers are turned off or your notification, the dings and bings, but the vibration's okay. Because actually, I was here a couple times during council meetings in the evenings. I've been called out to fire departments. We also had a medical emergency with one of our counselors that he had to up and leave very quickly during, just recently, in a council meeting. So when it comes to saying, "No cellphones," unfortunately, they've become part of our lives, and a lot of people have a lot of things that they do other than just to use for social media platforms. They do a lot more nowadays. That's my only suggestion on that.
Okay. Was there any, oh, Counselor question, go ahead.
I haven't read through the document that much, because I'm having trouble reading the stuff, but from the discussions about the cellphone, you know, gee whiz, we are adults.
Sorry, I have a doctor's call.
Oh, I speak of the devil.
There you go. That's the purpose why we carry, you know, we're not going to be using our cellphones for personal stuff unless it's some type of an emergency or something comes up, or, for instance, if I, if I can't get on council, I can go to my phone and get on to it, you know? So let's just use some common sense here. I mean, gee whiz, we are adults, supposed to be.
So if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to be clear, the language that's in there does not prevent anybody from using a cellphone to access tools and materials for the meeting at hand. The language doesn't read that way.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Listen, I think what I'm hearing is consensus that those two items be removed by the counselors. I think it's good practice, and because they're in there and because there can be misunderstandings. So if a counselor is, even if they are accessing their phone, is permitted under the procedural policy. We're videotaped. It may or may not be appropriate, but I think that I would agree with Counselor Cushing. I think it should be the discretion of each elected member and in concert with the, certainly the warden, if it becomes an issue with the staff or with the individual counselor, that conversation can be had in private, and we can police it that way, but I don't think there's, policy's heavy-handed, it's next to the law, so I would recommend removing
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, just looking at 9.3, the order of the meeting, just some, you know, these are obviously some changes, but I wanted to point that out. So in future, is it looking like we're calling the meeting to order and then going into in-camera if necessary, which is somewhat different from what we've been doing? And then I see the warden's remarks are coming at the end, so is this a new, a new order that we're looking to follow?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
It is, and it's in response to the training we've had recently around in-camera. It's definitely a very big change from the way we've been handling in-camera now. We have never done anything that's against the law. I'll be clear on that. But this is, this is really how it should be done, and we do have the department doing a little bit more training with us later this month, and I fully expect that they're going to recommend an agenda layout kind of like that anyway. And I'll be honest, in my previous municipal experience, this is how it was done.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that, other than what Counselor Cunningham brought up? I'm going to be honest with you, I have not gone through this in depth myself personally. I am, at this moment in time, I'm not really, not saying that we shouldn't make any changes as Counselor Cunningham has stated on 9 point, was it 9.3? Or, no.
11.7.
11, 11.7, if I remember right. 11.7?
And 8, Leland.
In which one?
11.7 and 11.8.
I'm not saying that I'm for or against at this, really at this moment in time. This is only the draft, and I guess I'm going to ask the CAO, this does not have to go to a first reading, second reading, or anything else. This is just a draft. So I guess at this time, my question to you fellow counselors, do you wish to proceed with this, with the removal, as Counselor Cunningham has said, or do you wish to take and read this more in-depth and get a better understanding? And if you have any questions, to be able to ask the CAO directly and so on. You know, that's my only one concern that I have, because this is, once you have this, it's there, and then new councils and so on will be following it, as will ourselves moving forward. So I just, that would be my only one concern. Deputy Warden?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I read through this once last night, and I didn't absorb, I don't think, a whole heck of a lot of it. There was one thing that I had a couple of questions on the, on item 9.3, council meetings, in regards to the order that the meeting shall be conducted.
Yeah.
I wanted to think about that a little bit more.
Yeah.
It almost seems like it's set up backwards the way we used to do it. Now, I'm one that doesn't like to change. I understand the reasoning behind it, what the CAO mentioned, but I wanted to have a little bit more information or input to her about that and the reasoning why. Other than that, I think that's a good suggestion that we, if we have any questions, to actually read it and really understand it, because sometimes I have to read through things two or three times just to understand. Obviously, Counselor Durkey had read through it, and she absorbed a heck of a lot more than I did.
Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are some significant changes in this, and I don't want to rush this through, so I would absolutely not be prepared to bring it forward to council. I mean, it is a draft, and I think, I highly recommend if we see something else that, you know, we have a discussion about that. So, no, I would like to continue to read it through with a fine-tooth comb, and I'm, not that I haven't, I did already, but obviously, pointed some things out, but it's fairly lengthy, so I think it, I think we, for all of us, it would be better to continue to read it.
Counselor, thank you. I would agree with that. I think maybe we should, we should take the time to, because it is the procedural, is how we operate.
Yes.
Nothing's more important than governance.
Yeah.
So having said that, I would agree that we should take some time to give feedback to CAO and bring it back to the next committee of the whole for recommendation to that following regular meeting. So that would be the November meeting. Yeah.
Yep, okay. Is that agreed? If in the interim, though, if when you're reading through the document, either highlight or write your question down and either bring it back to the November meeting, but in order to help things move along, if you do have a question on any one of these lined items, if you call the CAO and ask and try to get that information, and they can document it, and then when we come back in the November meeting, here's what some of your concerns and to be able to move it along quicker so we can approve it for the end of November.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So what we can do is, if counselors call and they have a question or concern, what we can do is, we can link for you a version, we call it the marked-up version, so somebody's question will show on the document, and then you'll have time to think about that question in order to debate it.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Because we already have the recommendation on 11.7 and 11.8 and so on, so we get those recommendations there. So is there any further discussion on that policy at this time? I see the deputy warden has his finger on the button, but he's not pressing it, so I don't... Go ahead.
In regards to this policy, it talks about using microphones and stuff like that. I think we're also, if we adopt this policy, is sitting in the chairman's position for committees and when the warden is not here. The way that our system works, you cannot, like, say, for example, if I had to explain a motion and there was two other microphones ahead of me, I couldn't go back to explain something like a question that another counselor member had back to the mover of the original motion, so...
Yeah, you have to bounce through those other...
So you have to bounce through the other microphones first before it can get back to me to answer a question that another counselor, because obviously, it goes, Mr. Chair threw you to the council member that made the motion. I would like you to explain what you meant by this part of the motion.
Yeah.
You can't do that with our current microphone system either, and that's something that's always been a thorn in my side whenever I sat up in that chair during PAC meetings. I find that a lot. Sometimes when the person's sitting at the presentation table, if, say, for example, they turn off a microphone, if they have a hearing impairment or something like that, they turn it off so the voice comes to the speaker, but they can't automatically, you can't automatically turn their microphone back on.
They're going to go through the numbers.
You have to go through the numbers. So when we go through that policy, we've got to remember some of the ramifications it's going to have to some of our equipment as well, so that's something that needs to be looked at, should council decide that they're going to adopt this policy.
Yeah.
It doesn't really pertain to the policy, but you've got to remember, if you change a policy, you've got to make sure the equipment or whatever else you're using works to support the policy.
Yeah.
So that's something that needs to be looked at as well, because I have no disagreement with the way that meetings should be run and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's just a point that I'd like to bring up. And seeing, that's one thing that I caught after the fact.
Yeah.
And I'm glad that we're going to be looking through this as well.
Okay, that's good. Was there any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the film, go back to 4.1, which was the filming policy, F-046-19, and I believe Mark is going to go through that for you.
Actually, just before he speaks, if I could, Mr. Chair. So what we are proposing with this particular piece is kind of a two-step approach. So in your package, you had two documents. You had the actual policy statement that we're bringing forward for you for discussion, and then you also have, which Mark's going to present, is the actual program, the regulations. So we're trying this out with this particular file, because we think it's a file well-suited for this, is separating the actual policy statement from the regulations or the program, because there could be fine-tuning of the program based on how the film industry works that isn't really related to policy. So we're trying this out to see how it works. We may not like it this way. We may want to embed the program in the policy. It will be council's wishes. So it's a little bit of a different presentation than what you're used to. So the first document that was attached is the actual policy being suggested, F-046-19, and it lays out the framework and gives the authority for the program, and my tablet's not working right here, but it basically lays out the elements that the regulations must speak to. And then the second document is the actual program that the Economic Development Office would administer with the film industry. So Mark's here today, and Darlene is also here today, so we can, we can talk about the two pieces separately. Mark's going to go through the program with you, and then we can have a conversation, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Yep, fine. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you very much. My apologies, I was out on a phone call, so I apologize for that. So, yes, film industry and MODI. If I can get this to go. There we are. So here's the history. Up until the film, The Lighthouse, came out, there was no call, we hadn't received any calls for any production company, or anybody for that matter, to film in the municipality. When, we received initial contract act around February or March, and then from March to April, it was pretty well decided that they were going to film here, and that's when we started to get asked for a whole bunch of different documentations and processes and procedures. So as you can see, basically, we just reacted. We didn't have anything prepared, so we learned as we went along with that. They had many questions about location agreements, film permits, what would be needed. We were uncertain about, and we didn't have any, they asked us about fee structure, and we had no policy or procedures in place, so we just, we won it, if that's a word. We winged it. So this is how we responded. As I said, as we went through the process, it was a learning procedure, it was drinking through a fire hose. But then after, we said, what would happen if this happened again? So what we decided to do was some research, and we did obviously a lot of online research. We looked at other municipalities, other towns, saw what they had for documentation, what their processes were like. We thought, and we looked to see if that was applicable to our municipality. And we also reached out to some folks in the industry that some of our colleagues and others had relationships with, and we asked them what they thought. After similar iterations between myself, Greg, the CAO, and Darlene, we've come up with a pretty good draft, and maybe some slight tweaking might have to happen, but yeah, and we actually beta-tested it with one production, a smaller production company. They looked at all the forms, the process, they said was okay, and the forms that we had borrowed, there's another word for it, I forget what it is, but yeah, the forms we had borrowed from some documents with, from other municipalities, they were happy with those as well. And the result is the Lights, Camera, MODI document. And so if you've seen this document, that's the front page of it. So why did we do this? First and foremost, we wanted to mitigate risk to the municipality and its residents, and to that end, we made sure that there was location agreements in this procedure. We've got some film permits in there, there's a fee structure of sorts, hold harmless, indemnification letter, and proof of insurance is all in the document. What this does is it provides a clear path for production companies coming in. It's repeatable, and I must say, it puts us in a better light when somebody does come and want to film. We say, here's the process, and here's the procedure, and here's the forms that need to be filled out. And it also, it's a tool that we're using to encourage filming in the future. So the next question is, who does this target? Professional production companies, news media and film students, and on the non-professional side, the hobbyists, the family personal events and amateur photographers and videographers wouldn't necessarily have to follow this program. And then there's non, there's the NPOs and the charities as well. In consultation with myself and other staff members, we would decide whether they needed to follow this process. In this, in this document, there's actually two processes. There's the regular track and the fast track. But some of the, so speaking to some of the highlights, it captures the full scope of the production. So once they go through this process, depending on whether it's the regular or the fast track, regardless whether it's regular or fast track, we'll have a much better indication of how big a production this is going to be and how much of an impact it will have on the municipality and/or the residents. And from there, we would, we would ask the requisite forms be filled out so we can make a determination whether we need to call in EHS and the fire folks and the like. So as I pointed out, there are two timelines. There's the fast track and the regular track. The regular track assumes we've got about six months lead time. Sometimes, and what has happened mostly since the filming of The Lighthouse, is smaller productions coming in and telling us maybe about a month in advance that they'd like to film. So that's when we decided, you know what, we needed a fast-track program, so we have that in place. And then, as I pointed out, there are some folks that will want to do some filming that won't be required, that will not require to do this, like news media, they can film just about anywhere they would like. And as I said, we do have sample location agreements and film permits, and as I said, indemnification letters, hold harmless, and proof of insurance samples as well that they could use, and a list of contacts, the municipal contacts, and the available surfaces that we might have and might be able to provide for those folks. And then last, I'm not sure if you're aware, but these are the folks that came to film at the Cape. We had A24, they filmed The Lighthouse, that's a big production company. We had Uni TV, which did a small little ballade series on Jacques Suret. And then APTN came out, and they filmed an episode of Spirit Talker. And Carga VII filmed an episode for Uncharted. And that's about it. I'll entertain any questions.
Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Mark, and staff for putting this together. I do, I do have a few questions, and first of all, thanks, having experience with this over many years. Some experience, I have to say, in certain directions. I have a little bit of input, and I hope you don't mind if I throw that out there. It's just from experience, and it don't mean any disrespect in any way, but there are a couple of things. One is the call sheets. I know from experience that that, those call sheets are very confidential, and in all likelihood, that a production company will not want to provide that to... And so if we ask for it, that might make them feel uncomfortable, so I wanted to point that one out. Thank you for doing the fast track. Again, I know that a lot of times, things... Again, I know that a lot of times, things are pulled together at the last minute, and likelihood of, you know, six months in advance, a lot of times, companies have no idea that that's the timeline. And I hope that we're flexible in that because a lot of times, that has to be altered. I was looking at some of the forms, and again, I hope you don't mind that I give you this input. So things like distribution in the production information synopsis form, that information usually is not available, like with a big movie like A24, because they don't know at that point who's going to be distributing it. So I mean, I see what you're, is this going to be a, just a big screen movie, or theater, whatever, I see that point. But just keep in mind that a lot of times, it's not done in advance. And there was a spot where they, where we put the, you know, they have to put principal, the director, the scriptwriter, the principal cast in.
They might not know.
Again, that piece is often confidential to the very last minute before they want to release that. So I just wanted you to be aware that those are some of the concerns. You can, I can, if you want to have a chat, I can give you some more. And this is, again, from experience and having someone in my family that is in the film industry, I just know a little bit more than the general public would. The other person, and I'm not sure if you've contacted, but Sean, I suspect that you probably had some contact with Sean about it, because he would be the best person as a location manager to say, oh, man, you got to be careful because that might be too much information and too many forms to fill out, and they might run the other way. We want to make it as easy as possible. But otherwise, I'm really thankful that we've put this together. And just to throw this out there, when I was in Toronto at TIFF, I was talking to some, there were the production companies, Regency was there, and RT was there. And of course, I'm plugging, come back to Yarmouth, come back to Yarmouth. So this, and they were so favorable, just for everybody to know, extremely favorable. There were comments about how fantastic the crew was. And yes, they said, if we have something that would fit back in your area, we'd be back in a minute. So there were no negative comments about filming down here whatsoever. I mean, other than the distance from Halifax and having union staff there is, can be an issue, but they certainly were, again, very favorable. So thank you. I think this, knowing that we have this in place will certainly help.
Yeah. So if I may respond to some of the questions. So yes, we ask for distribution, we ask for principal and the director and such, and yes, it is confidential. We do say that we will sign a confidentiality agreement, but I still get it. They might not want to give that information. We don't say in our document or documentation or process that it has to be filled out completely. So I mean, there is that, they have that discretion if they like. And at the end of the day, we ask for what we ask for, and they'll give us what they want to give us, and we'll make the determination whether it's enough or not to proceed or not. But there, yes, perhaps it might scare them off, but I don't think so. And as I said, we did beta-test this with Carga VII, actually. We sent them the whole process and told them it was beta. And he looked at it, and he said, yeah, it's, as far as he's concerned, it's fine. But I understand your points, and yeah, by all means, we'll take it into consideration and go forward. Yeah.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Mark, you said that we weren't prepared for this film that came, we didn't know. In saying that, did we lose money? Could we have gotten more?
Who knows? I don't think so.
Did we were treated right?
Yes, I think so. Yeah.
No further questions. I have a couple, and I only have one page of the policy, so I don't know, or I don't have my computer. There must have been a lot of other information.
So the policy is only one page, the program is several pages?
Okay, well, that's what you guys must have been looking at, yeah, okay. My question, I don't know if, Mark, you can answer it, or be through Greg to the CAO. I know any time that the municipality is doing a project, a new capital project and so on, there is different things that have to be in place. The contractor has to carry, like, workman's compensation, has to carry liability insurance, has to have safety policies and so on. Is, so I guess I'm going to direct it to you, Mark. Is there a requirement in this policy that this film company, or a film company, or, as you put up there, just a documentary company that's doing a film, is there going to be somewhere in there that they have to provide that type of information in order to protect the municipality? If they were doing, well, case in point toward Greg, when we done the one out there, if rocks had fallen off of the rock wall and hurt somebody, would they come back on the municipality, or would that be their responsibility and so on?
So the program, I'll take it. The program does require hold harmless indemnifications in Mark's slides, the proof of insurance, depending on the type of production. It's anywhere from $2 to $10 million worth of insurance.
Okay.
And we would be additionally named insured in that policy.
Yes. Well, I guess that's what I, because I didn't have any thoughts, and that would be a question that, in order to protect the municipality, not that I want to drive anything away, I want anything that can come, but I also have to protect, in so in that respect.
That was foremost on our minds when we drafted this.
Okay.
So if I can, Mr. Chair, I'll direct, I'll maybe ask council to take a look at the policy document that we included in the package, because the intent of the policy is really important, because it will speak to kind of the scale and scope of items that could be in the program. So if you go to your meeting package on your devices and you open the policy document, the purpose of the policy reads, the intent of the policy is to facilitate filming in the municipality in such a manner that residents of the community are not unduly inconvenienced, the operations of the municipality are not at risk, and the industry can thrive.
Okay.
So we're seeking to create that balance.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Well, yeah. You know, I guess I'm going from our one major experience that we had when Greg and myself, at that time, and the counselor from that area, we met when they were going to be doing the cleanup and so on, and went over a lot of details and so on. So all of that would be, you went on the site, it looked like this, when you leave the site, it looks like this.
It's in there.
Or it's improved. Yeah, it's not in a, yeah, and that's what we received over there, and it was easily done. Yeah, I guess that's the biggest thing. I think productions of any film are a benefit, as long as the municipality breaks even, is an important thing. But the community benefited big time by the room nights. Yeah. And everything else, A, the other spending and so on, benefited the community of Yarmouth County greatly. So whether it's in Argyle, or whether it's in the town, it benefits big for all of us and so on. Okay. Was there any further questions or discussions on that? Now, this, are we looking at, I'm sorry, I have to keep flipping back today. Is this a policy that you'd like to have move?
If council is satisfied with it, I'm ready to receive instructions to have it on your agenda for October 23rd.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Durkey.
Yes. Oh, yeah, sorry. I'd like to recommend that we move the film policy to council for approval.
Okay. That's film policy F-046-19?
It is.
Yes. Okay. Just for the records, that's all, Counselor. Okay. So that's the agreement of council? Okay. Good. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll also need to forward the draft council approval.
Not to council, I don't think, Counselor Cunningham, because we've got to bring it back and brush it up a little bit, right?
Our committee of hold in November and so on. It's just a recommendation.
Oh, recommendation.
Yeah. And you're all agreeable to that.
We're getting ready.
There we are. Was there any further questions to Mark at this time on that policy? Hearing none. Mark, thank you very much for your presentation, appreciate it. Thank you for your diligence on this project. And we'll expect some type of film company in 2020. Thank you, Mark. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor.
I just want to add a couple of pieces, because, you know, this is really important to us as a community, that, just to let you know, that A24 is putting forth Rob Pattinson's name for best actor for Oscars this year, and Willem Dafoe is being, is best supporting actor. And all of those pieces, and the amount of attention that this movie is getting, is all wonderful for us. So we have to think about, you know, what can we do at Cape Frisbee to attract people to come to see where this was filmed? But the critic reviews have been unbelievably outstanding everywhere, and it'll be anxious to see once it's released. And also, to, because the public may want to know this, the Cineplex would be getting the movie. However, it goes to the biggest cities first, and that our local Cineplex is working on making sure that it's here, and if not, if they're not getting it, then I think there's some contacts that we can make to ensure it does come to Yarmouth. It's exciting. It's really, really.
Yes, it is.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question, Counselor Durkey, and in your experience, you may know the answer, and we may have to look for the answer, but if a theater, a local theater is a part of the Cineplex chain, they pay their parent company to bring the productions. So if it was a money issue, would that change anything on whether or not we could get the production brought here to show in our local cinema?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I turned myself off. I honestly don't know that. What I do know is, when I was in Toronto, I did mention to them, to both Regency and RT, that we need to make sure that it is shown in Yarmouth. And also, top sale, too, has kind of been, I've been kind of working on this to make sure it happens. And they also will, if we're having any difficulties, I think they'll support us and help us. I know MODI, there was a question of MODI being shown here, and it wasn't on the schedule, and eventually, it did get to the schedule, so we'll be on top of it. They have to show it here, there's no question.
Counselor Cunningham?
If it is in limited release, and it's not going to be in every theater, but I would hope certainly we'll work to, shouldn't say ensure, because we can't ensure that, but to have it shown in Yarmouth. But I'm wondering if Yarmouth and Canadian sure should be made aware of when it's showing, and do some promotion around it, because if it's in a limited number of theaters, you may have people from Annapolis Valley, you may have people from, you know, Bridgewater that want to see the movie. I'm not sure how many places it will be released in Halifax, but, and if the timing's different, certainly that's also, you know, people may come from communities all over Nova Scotia, and maybe even beyond, to see the movie in Yarmouth in particular. So that may be something we could work on as well.
I can check in with the executive director of YASTA. He is in very close relationship with the team. He introduced the movie in Halifax. So I, but I can confirm and check in with him to make sure between him and Counselor Durkey, somebody on our team is in the loop, so that if we need to activate, we can activate.
I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. It pertains to The Lighthouse, but it's not about The Lighthouse. Back many, many years ago, there was a movie that was produced. And in today's society, a lot of people like to watch, and if you go on Netflix, or Crave, or any of them, you'll see a lot of movies that have, they're based on true events and true situations that have happened and so on. There was a movie made quite a few years ago, which touched a lot of people's hearts and brought reality to them, and that was The Perfect Storm. That was a US-based Ode to Gloucester, Gloucester. Ode to the States, sorry, there's certain words I can't get my tongue around. Anyway, Ode to the States, and so on. And it was a true, true event that happened, and had a lot of meaning for a lot of people in the fishing industry and so on. When Mr. Clark, Sean Clark, was here on location and so on, the location manager and so on, Counselor Cushion and myself took the opportunity to speak to him, and we presented him with the book, and that pertained to The Miss Alley. And that, that one story, and we explained to him at the time that it was a true event that had happened and so on. He made no promises. He said he would read it, and he would pass it on. A lot of events like that take years to produce and so on, or get into the hands of the proper people and so on. And I realize it's not a story out of Yarmouth, but it's from Southwest Nova, and there'd be a lot of rules, regulations, and things he'd have to go through. But I believe, and I'm not saying that we should be pushed, or we should push it, but I believe right now is a time when people of, I'll say, Atlantic Canada could use a story, a true event, that happened in Atlantic Canada. And what I mean by that, Newfoundland, there's been a lot of events like that up there and so on, but I believe there'd be an opportunity for, to proceed, or to ask, or to support that request going forward, because that's a big industry here, and I think it would be a great opportunity for Southwest Nova to pursue and so on. So hopefully, Mr. Clark was, has put it in the right hands and so on, but it would be a, I think it'd be a true event that shows, you know, what we're made of, because I don't know if any of you, or all of you have read the story, Miss Alley. If you haven't had the opportunity, pick up the book. It's very easy reading. It's very easy reading, and it goes into details on each and every one of the crew members. And I want to tell you, they were a tough crowd. They were a tough crowd of young people, hard workers and so on. And believe it or not, there's a lot of fishermen that spoke to them just before the accident, on their way in and so on, and spoke to them. So there's a lot of connections there, so. I just thought I'd mention it and so on, in that respect. Go ahead, Counselor Cushion.
Since you're speaking on the tragedy of Miss Alley, I, when I read through the book, there was names in there that I knew.
Yes.
And there were some of them young fellows that were lost, they actually played hockey and I knew them to see them on the ice and whatnot. I haven't played against them, but I coached against them, so anyway, so it's, when you read something like that, and you can relate to that, it's pretty touching, I would say, or anything like, you know, pretty traumatic. But you know, there's a lot of, a lot of fishing incidents that happened that we may hear about very briefly, but if we really looked into it, if, you know, the film industry would consider some of these other things that happening, sort of anything like off of Saba Island, and, you know, there's a lot of pretty horrific storms that they go through. Since that time from The Miss Alley, there was another vessel, a Canzo, that was a haulibat fisher off of the Saba, and they, the time they got back to shore, their boat was in pretty hairy shape. They made it home, thankfully, but they become close of gnawed. So there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of stories out there.
There is, Counselor, and so on, and that's why sometimes people like to have something that they can relate to, even though it's not, I'll say, from the, in the council area, I believe, within Southwest Nova, I believe that one story on The Miss Alley could touch the hearts of everybody in Atlantic Canada and so on. And believe it or not, I, you know, is a true story, because I'm not going to lie to you, I do watch documentaries that are true and so on. I also watch movies that are true, and my mind will work, you know, really, that's what happened, and this is how the people, the strength and so on, to move forward and so on. And full kudos to... And full kudos to Downwoods Harbour, Shag Harbour, those people and so on. That was a terrific event and so on. And still to move on and so on. But I think it would be a, I believe in my mind that it would be a terrific movie to put out there, the same as I think a lot of us were touched by The Perfect Storm and so on. Go ahead, councillor.
One, one last comment if we get on this. You know, the town of Yarmouth and their memorial down on, on Water Street.
Yes.
Is a fantastic.
Yes, it is.
Fantastic history lesson there about the tragedy of sea. And once you see all those names and, you know, there's even a name from our little community of Pembroke on that list.
Yeah.
You know, and there's another name that was just from a lost, a fisherman lost out of Sanford. His, him and his crew. And again, from just my neighbor down the road, he was lost or anything like that. So it was, you know, so there's, there's a lot of history and tragedy along the coast. And when you see all the names, it's just, you don't realize how much tragedy's been at sea.
Yeah.
It can love you or it can hate you.
Yes, that is true. Thank you very much. Okay, item number five, business arising from the minutes. Five point one, the Carlton Community Garden Proposal. Deputy Warden John Cunningham from, this is from the September 11th meeting. Go ahead, Count.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You all have before you a request that I had from a Mr. Josh Cutro, a resident out in the Carlton Triangle area in regards to a community garden proposal. Here in front of you, he, he describes what, what he would like to construct. It is basically ten raised plaster, planter beds roughly three, three feet by, wide by 16 feet long, at least 24 inches high to allow for a comfortable working height for anyone with reduced mobility. I cannot answer any more questions, but before you is an email that I received from him on, on, on his plans and also a, a quick diagram. My suggestion would be is to get Mr. Cutro in here. As you can see, you see his phone number and his email here. Maybe the municipality district of Yarmouth could possibly contact him for, for a little bit more information. I did talk to the CEO very quickly about it in regards to our grants policies and stuff. And it's sometimes, or it, it's not common for the municipality district of Yarmouth to, to give out a grant to an individual. The CEO could, could speak a little bit more to that, I'm sure. And also if council has any questions for the individual, we, we could ask him and what his plans and that are going to be. So I relinquish the floor to the chair.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, councillor Cunningham.
Right, and I hear that. I'm just, I'm just not certain. Is this, is this an item for staff to deal with first? And then if staff has a request for council? It does seem like an individual thing. It's not a group that's coming in to present. It seems like somebody wants to do something on their property for the community. And wouldn't that go just through the development department? I'm, I'm not certain. I'm just adding some additional questions.
So I would, I would agree with you and with the deputy warden. It's really unclear what Mr. Cutro is proposing here. Is he asking for permission to do something? Or is he actually going, is the ask actually for financial support from, from Modi? So I think that's why the deputy warden brought it here so that council could give direction, either have the individual fill out a grant application or is it just a referral to the development officer? And we won't know unless we have a conversation with Mr. Cutro.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Would our next step not be just to have our CEO, our staff, contact Mr. Cutro to see what his intentions are and then we can move from there? Is that it?
Go ahead, you can speak now, Lauren. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. The interesting part here about Mr. Cutro's request and whatnot, and we can figure out all the details. But I have, I've had experience in these types of raised bids that he's talking about. When I was an employee with, with the town of Yarmouth, we, we constructed some at the seniors' homes and throughout the town. And at that time, again, they were high enough that the, that the individual, the senior, could come out and sit on and reach over and, and do the thing. And I also had a private individual that just lived down here on, on, on the Lake Milo stretch. They had a huge raised garden. They were from Europe, Europeans they were. And, and they had all different types of vegetables and plants in there, which was, I think was one of, probably one of the first ones that I've, that I've actually seen. What he's talking about here is, is, is a worthwhile project. Because it gives, it gives the seniors an opportunity, seniors and others, to get out and, and do something that they used to do years and years ago when, when they were in their younger years on their farms and, and whatnot, raising their own gardens and whatnot. So I think it's a, I think if he comes through the right proposals and whatnot, and like I say, our staff look at it, I think the community garden is a, is an excellent idea. And we should, you know, try to understand the value of it for, for the wellbeing of, of citizens in this particular area would, would certainly be helpful.
Was there any further discussion or? So the direction would be for staff to contact this person and set up a meeting? Go ahead, deputy warden.
That, that's what I'm hearing here. I, I also have a few questions, but I think it's a, there, there may also be other funding areas that, that staff could direct them to. If I'm not mistaken and I can't confirm this, I believe he talked to Frank Grant in regards to accessibility for, for seniors and stuff. So, so there might be other avenues to go along with that. I, I'm not even sure if he would have to start up a community garden group. I'm, I'm not sure about that. So I guess my suggestion would be to possibly direct staff to contact Mr. Cutro on some of his plans or, or what, what he perceives in the future. And if it falls with under, within our, our grants policy, that, that, that the staff help him out filling out one of those, if, if it's applicable to that.
So we don't help the community groups? We don't fill out paperwork for them? We answer questions and we provide them with feedback. You're quite right. It's unclear what the ask is here. It seems like it's a proposal that's being put before you. So, yeah, I'll reach out to Mr. Cutro and really find out exactly what the vision is. Is there, is there actually a group of citizens behind this initiative? And are they looking for advice on how to organize and all those things? Yep. So you're okay if I get back to, back to him directly? Okay.
One of the questions there, concerns that I have is it's basically right in the very, in regards to the discussion, I plan to situate it on the upper end of my field, adjoining the parking area of the old church lot, which we also own. So this is a private individual on private property. And in today's society, I, for the municipality, at, right at this moment in time, to put money forward, even for a private community group on private property, wouldn't that not have to be a long-term lease, subdivided or something? Because if the owner of that property decides to sell their house or their, their property and somebody else now is the owner, they're not community spirited. Gone. You know, you're, I don't want that on my property and so on. So that would be a question I.
Absolutely.
See, when I originally read it and when it had the word church, the old church, I thought that was the community property, that it was owned by the community of Carlton, where the old church was. Or that church organization still owned the property, but they don't. This, this is a private owner, isn't it? Well, that would be one of the questions, I guess, would be, have to be asked by the CEO to this person and so on that. I, I think the project, any, any of those kind of ideas that can be community-based and orientated for seniors and people, I see the one at Beacon, and it's, it's a forest in itself. They really grow a lot of stuff there. So I, I think the idea, the concept is great. But there is, yeah, that we have to be very careful on how we support some of those. So the direction has been given and so on? Thank you. Five point two, Doctor Recruitment and Retention Committee, councillor Patty Durkey from the September 25th. Go ahead, councillor, you have the floor.
I am assuming that this was about this motion. It was moved by Pam Mood and seconded by Nicole Albright, that the Doctor Recruitment Retention Committee will bring forward to the respective councils that in future, the committee will be making discussions that are non-financial. And I believe Deputy Warden Cunningham wanted to have some more discussion about that.
Okay.
Because I don't think I added that to this committee meeting. But I think that was the, the point that this was being brought forward.
I can't remember. I don't have my.
So at, at council, yep, the item was discussed and the consensus was to bring it forward to committee, the whole for broader discussion in terms of.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Maybe a framework around what types of decisions and so forth.
So essentially, it's an advisory committee made up of professionals in the field. And that the, the discussion was that should we want to write a letter on behalf of the Doctor Recruitment Committee? That if we had to bring it to all the councils, how long it would take by the time everybody agreed or disagreed? Then it doesn't get, it takes too long to get done. So if you want immediate action, so that, that's, that was the point. That I guess we're looking for permission or recommendation that, you know, we want to be able to just go ahead and, and react to situations that are not financial without having to bring it back to council.
Okay. Was there further?
Any questions?
Further discussion? Go ahead, councillor.
It seems reasonable to me. I mean, if they're, if they're non-financial decisions and they're, they're, that don't have, you know, monetary, I mean, we, we've obviously supported the activities through a financial contribution. So beyond that, I, I can't see why we wouldn't allow for letters to be written to individuals concerning doctor recruitment. I think that's what the, the team does. And, and I, I don't see any, I, I don't see any reason why that, that wouldn't be allowed. I would think that would just be the normal course of business. I, maybe I'm not understanding the, the ask, but it seems reasonable that they're in charge of doctor recruitment. They do all those things necessarily. They've, they've been given the budget. I don't know what financial pieces would be. I mean, unless they were writing a letter to, you know, that, that would have us spend additional dollars or something like that. I, I can't see why we wouldn't allow that committee to, to, to communicate with others. Is there, am I missing something? That's my question.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My question would be, it's like what type, what I'm trying to put my head around is what type of request or, or letter would, would the committee be needing to send out that, that's not, requires any financial implication or does not have any financial implications, but yet would be, I'm, I'm grasping at an example. Like, I have no personal problem, but I'm, I'm trying to look for an example. Because they, let's face it, I, I don't want to micromanage every committee or, or every decision that they make out there. But when it comes down to a financial crash, yeah, I'd like at least to know. But I'm also looking for an example of like a letter that you may send out to an organization or an individual that, that you're speaking of.
Go ahead.
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
The last letter was the committee wrote a letter to the minister asking for a review of pay scale because, for doctors, because we had received some information that, from an exit interview, that that was one of the reasons why doctors were leaving, because they felt the pay scale was too low. And fortunately, we received a response to that, saying that that is something they are presently working on, reviewing all of that. So that's the type of thing where, you know, we're just advocating on behalf of, of our residents and doctors who are here for things that they need or want to try to help them out.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This has been my last time speaking about this. I have absolutely no problem with that. Nor would I ever want to be micromanaging a committee for, for correspondence in that regard. So I'd be more than comfortable to forward this word to council, forward this to our council meeting to accept the, the recommendation.
Anybody else?
For me, I have, I have a question on, on respect. Would the councils and the other organizations that are helping funding this, would they be copied on some of these letters, councillor?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we would have.
Yes.
Although you bring back reports and so on, don't get me wrong, that we would have a copy for our, our files?
Yes, I believe the last time we did that, it was attached as we, part of the, the recruitment committee package that gets attached to our monthly report. And you'll be getting the reports from the community navigator as well.
Okay. Was there any further questions or any concerns of at this time? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Five point three, rural internet service from the September 25th, regular rural internet service. Who wishes to discuss or that topic?
I have an update, Mr. Warden. Yep, yep.
Okay.
So it's not, don't get excited. So actually, based on the conversation that council had when we met in September, I did have a couple of conversations with the CEO at the Western Ren. And her economic development officer, who's the lead on the rural internet file, leveraged an opportunity to bring the administrators together with, with some project influencers next week when we're having our AMA meetings. So there is going to be an update and a debrief between the Western Ren, the administrators and the internet service providers, who, who are the people who actually submitted the RFPs to Develop Nova Scotia. We are going to get an update next Wednesday afternoon. So stay tuned.
Go ahead, deputy warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It was my, my question to the CEO during the CEO's report that she gave to our last regular council meeting and the reason why it's here. Thank you very much, Madam CEO, for, for looking into that. I'm going to go on record again, I'm not happy with the speed that this is moving forward. I actually had an opportunity the other night to go to the candidates forum for the federal election. And I had posed a question to them about mandating or asking the CRTC to mandate that this internet install service is a essential service. So it would have to be provided. I did not receive the answer I really wanted to hear. Jason DeVoe did, did mention that the CRTC is an independent body, which I did not know at the time. But however, it would be up to the, the federal government to lobby them to, to mandate this as a, as a critical service. For example, we all know that, that students nowadays, they do a lot of their homework online. A lot of our banking's online. Just about everything we have is online. It, it's a real deterrent to, to municipal units, especially in the rural areas, to, to expand or work from home. It's, it's quite a problem. And there has been a, a whole lot of funds that's been forward. Millions, millions, half, half a billion dollars was, was put forward by the federal government to help out rural internet. Also, we have the province that, that's also working on that. And they put a, a bunch of money, I believe it was 120 million at the time. When we had this, when, when the province put, put all this internet service and stuff into the hands of Develop Nova Scotia, I expected them to move a little bit faster. This has been a, a pet project of mine pretty well since I started council 11 years ago. And the situation has barely moved, at least in my district, and people are getting upset. So I just want to keep my foot on the gas on this issue. This is an issue that is not going away anytime soon. There's also one thing mentioned last night, or the other night at the candidates meeting that, that I didn't like to hear. They were talking about the year 2026, when everybody would be online. To me, that's not acceptable. I know that our hands are tied. And also I'm, I'm thinking too, maybe we should also start thinking about taking the. thinking about taking the bull by the horns by this municipality, and see what it would take to put up some type of communication network, whether it be through cellular, whether it be through laying our own cable. I don't know what that answer would be. Maybe that could go to our Development Officer, Mark Winn, or something like that. But people are getting frustrated. I'm not going to speak anymore on it, because I'm starting to get a little upset again about this whole situation. But thank you, Madam C A O. I'm looking forward to that report that you'll be getting next Wednesday.
Further discussions?
I'll just add one comment if I can, Mr. Chair. So, you're quite right, Deputy Warden. It's hard on municipal councils, because there's a balancing act. There's a financial stewardship piece where you want to use municipal dollars to leverage those provincial and federal dollars. Why wouldn't you? But yet, you have this piece that you know is one of those...it's in today's day and age, access to reliable cellular service and high-speed internet is as important, in some cases, as access to wastewater and clean drinking water, because of the impact it has on your community's ability to be sustainable and to grow and flourish. And to think about taking the bull by the horns and lay aside any financial partnership opportunities and figure out some solutions that we might want to self-fund, that's a very delicate decision for councils to make because of the financial piece. And I hear your frustration, and I would say that professionals who are supporting you through your economic development agencies and through your own team, we're equally frustrated with the speed that this is happening. I was in another jurisdiction on my holiday, and the financial piece, their foregoing financial stability, and they're just doing infrastructure projects. When they see that they need it, they're just building it, they're just doing it, and it's coming at a cost. So, there's a balancing act there.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Absolutely, there is a balancing act there. And one thing that I know, we've already done a couple of projects, but sometimes it's not good that you do it in piecework. That's not really helping the situation. It's helping the situation in a very localized area, but it's not helping everyone. And I'm afraid that if we go too far down that road, that's a road we'll never get out of, and it will be another piece of infrastructure that's going to cost the municipality down the road, because, number one, technology is changing very quickly, and the speed of the technology is changing very quickly. So, that means that when we start a project, like we've already done one, I'm a little bit afraid down the road that these people that have that service and they really like it, they're going to be behind the times, because that's a little piece that was cut out, and they're not going to be able to tie into the quote-unquote "new" infrastructure when it comes. So, it's a very...it's a very hard balancing act to follow, that's for sure.
Counselor Cunningham?
My understanding is that this is a provincial and/federal commitment to provide rural internet access, and as Counselor John Cunningham has indicated, I mean, it's a slippery slope for municipal units to provide that type of infrastructure. We've never provided, other than the small-scale grants that we've given to facilitate the tower in Carlton and so forth. I mean, those are kind of one-offs. I mean, the progress on this file is very, very slow, and we've asked for it to...I mean, they know that every municipality in Nova Scotia wants it to move quicker. So, I share everybody's frustration around that. It's supercritical that we get it faster. Everybody that wants to move here wants internet and cellphone service. You know, lots of homes, I'm sure, are on the market that are...that have reduced values, because they don't have that access. So, anyway, we...again, this is something that, as we move along, and, you know, individual opportunities come our way, maybe we can look at funding some of them. But, I mean, I know that's a huge thing to take...clearly, the provincial and federal governments have not been able to move this file quickly because of the expense of it and the technical hurdles and all those types of things. And so, I'm not so certain that it's our level of government's place to be there too, too much. I mean, if residents come forward and we have solutions, perhaps we can entertain those as we have in Carlton. But it's a daunting challenge, for sure.
Any further discussion? I have some discussion, and I'm not going to go into one of my rants, as Counselor Allen would say. But I'm very frustrated, very angry. In the movie Pretty Woman, Richard Greer, one of his lines was, "I'm angry, I'm very angry." And he mentioned that three or four times, and I've never forgotten those words from that movie. We just had the storm, Dorian, just went through in beautiful weather, thank God, that it was fine weather, went through, and there was a lot of damage. And Stephen McNeil made the comment, basically, because of cell service and internet service, that we have to do something about it. My comment to my M L A would be, why don't you ask him to get up off his A S S and do something about it? Just not say, "Well, we got to look at doing something about this." And his comment was, or his suggestion was, at the next time when they have to activate the EMO Nova Scotia in Dartmouth, you ready? The cell service providers have to be in the room. So, when their cell towers go down, the internet, what are you going to do? They got magic wands in Halifax, too. Ooh, bam. No, sir, I am so angry that I really don't want to speak about it. But I mark down some comments here. It's poor, your cell service and internet service for rural Nova Scotia outside the Golden Triangle. And I'm not saying that they don't have cell service in some parts of King's County and so on, but outside that Golden Triangle, we are nothing. We, as municipal units, are nothing to the rest of the province, and I am getting so angry at it. Case in point, I get them all the time. Go paperless and save yourself some money. Go paperless and save yourself some money. I want my bank statement and so on. I like it coming in the mail and so on, but I have to pay for that. Well, there's some people out in Carlton, they can't go paperless. They still need their phone bills. They still need their power bills to come to them, and their power bill now includes the paper costs, the administration costs, to have that done and sent to them, where I can eliminate that, because I have internet. But I'm not going to get rid of that for one simple reason. Today in my house, I've got internet. Twenty minutes later, my internet's gone from my house, and I got to wait. Twenty minutes later, it comes back on. Or I call East Link and ask them, "Well, we're having difficulties in your area." I'm just five kilometers outside the town of Yarmouth, and I'm in a busy area, and I'm losing internet service. Like, so, yeah, let's get rid of the paper for all these other people. They can't. They can't do online banking, as you stated. They can't do that stuff. And Mr. Stephen McNeil says, you know, "Next time we have activate to serve..." You know, no, Mr. McNeil, get out there and get it done, you know? We have three or four issues in Nova Scotia that are major issues. One is internet, and the other one is doctor recruitment, and the next one on that totem pole A is...excuse me. The next one on that list would be education and so on. But as far as I'm concerned, education is below the internet, because there's so many kids that are going home, and the teacher said, "You know, when you get home, just look it up on the internet." They don't have internet, or it's dropping. They can't get it, and they don't...Johnny doesn't want to say to the teacher, "Well, I don't have internet," because the kids are going to think his parents can't afford it. That ain't the issue. The issue is that they don't have it. And we sit around as councils, and, okay, well, they're going to discuss it at the AMA next week. I'd like to give direction to our C A O. When you get there and they say, "Well, it's going to be happening," to stand up and say, "No, it isn't happening. We want something done about it." And who is the person that we literally sit down, and if you have to get...close and lock the door, close and lock the door? Because we've been in business, and we know sometimes you have to be a little pushy to get something done. And municipal units are, well, don't bite the hand that feeds you. Well, sometimes you got to bite that hand. And as far as I'm concerned, on the internet, we've been sitting here kissing up, and probably when I'm through as a counselor, you'll still be sitting here kissing up for the internet, because it isn't going to happen. As far as I'm concerned, Southwest Nova, you ain't...you'll get some more, but it's just going to be a little bit more, in my own personal opinion. I hope it isn't that way, but no. And as for the federal government, given $500 million...well, Deputy Warden, $500 million in today's society across Canada, how far does it go? Case in point, you've heard more about vaping on the news than you've heard about doctor recruitment, than you've heard about education, and they're talking about how they got to ban vaping, how they got to do this. Now, you suppose that's all free? The federal government's got people working on how to ban vaping, and they're doing it all for free? They're spending more money on that? Did you all know? I found this out the other day, because I go to the reserve, get my gas, and I go in, and there's all their cigarettes all displayed there. I have no issues with that. That's fine. You know what they told me? And they had an information thing there that you could take. And what's this? And I couldn't believe it. The federal government has come out, all packaging on cigarettes will be the same. When you go in now, you'll see a silver package, a brown package, a red package, and so on. All cigarettes now have to be in the same colored package. There is different sizes of cigarettes. All have to be in the same sized package. There can't be no real super-long ones, et cetera, et cetera. But they're all going to be...and the clerks told me, he said, "Do you realize how much work that now going to make for us?" When a person goes in to buy cigarettes now, they know when you say you want Rothmans or whatever, they go, because it's a red package, you can put it up. Now that they're all brown, you, as the customer, when you ask for players, when the lady or the person gives you those players, you better look and make sure it says "players" on it, because all the packages are the same. You get over to the store halfway down the road, and it's Rothmans, or you don't smoke Rothmans or Export A, whatever it is, you're going to have the wrong package. They got to know. They have to look now. Now, do you suppose that was all done free? Somebody, somewhere, had to sit and spent...and I'm not saying he didn't deserve the money for doing the work, but why...and then Deputy Warden, you say, $500 million on rural internet across Canada. Well, whoop-dee-ding, whoop-dee-ding. Colin, get off your...you know, Zach, get off your...and seriously look at where the money's going. I...my thought, and I...and the C A O don't agree with it, and I fully understand. Sometimes you got to do it on your own, as we done out in Forestland. That was a good learning experience for us, because if we'd gone another, what, 30 feet, was it? How many more houses we could have covered? That was...but that was a learning curve. If we do another tower or do something again jointly, maybe let's go the full maximum height we can go and get as many as we can. To Counselor Allen's comments, some ranting? Yes, I am. That's my comments. I'm done. But I am mad. Anyway, moving on. And unless there's any further comment, moving on. Six. And I'll tell you the reason why I ranted when we're not in council. No, well, there's a reason, and the C A O knows. Six point one, information. Letter of thanks from the YMCA of Yarmouth. You had that in your package. Was there any comments or concerns and so on? Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
Well, certainly no concerns. Fantastic letter on behalf of the Chair of the Yarmouth YMCA Board of Directors, Chris Brown, and it's well-written. And anyway, I think we made the right decision to support the Y and all the activities that they offer there, including the pool and all the related activities. So, it's a fantastic thing. So, that's good news.
Yeah. Okay. Was there any further business of council? Then we'll just recess? Or do we...
Committee, the whole, I think, will adjourn, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Consensus to...do you have a comment?
No.
No, you're ready. Consensus to adjourn that. Okay, thank you very much.